And now I'm taking the order, I want to welcome everybody. The local's lovely with us, so excited to hear about him. So I just asked everybody to sign their cell phone and we'll cover this later.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then read our mission statement. I'm collecting the whole of it.
Okay. Lakeland Joint School District's daily mission is to maximize student learning and ensure every student is growing academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally every day in all environments.
Thank you. My next is patient input, I understand you don't have any, so we can get right on to the important presentation agenda. And tonight it is Caleb Adams, he's the National Invention Change and Accessibility Award winner. He was very exciting, he has his parents, his brother, and then Laura Spurway and his teacher Casey Williams. So Caleb, do you want to come up for him? And anybody who wants to join, why don't you go?
You guys go. So I'm gonna let Mrs. Spurway kind of introduce the topic. You saw we had Rory put her online for the Zoom meeting. And she sort of talked a little bit about the initiative, so I'll let her talk a little bit about that and then introduce the other.
I'm a talker, but I drink a lot of Pepsi, so hopefully I'll get it to a plate. So I'm Laura Spurway, I do the elementary gift and talent program for our district. But along with that, I get to work on academic opportunities for all of our students to really give them the opportunity to be creative, to be critical thinkers, and work on problem solving in real world applications. So one of those like I shared is the National Invention Convention that we offer for students. We have over 100 students participate, and we host this at Garwood every year, just where all of this district schools bring theirs. And luckily, we've also had a really good partnership, Ms. Williams is there and has ran doing this project with her students every year for eight years now. We also went in and partnered taught this year a little bit, brought in some new curriculum, really just elevated those opportunities for students. And with that, we have our national, this is our first Lakeland National Invention Convention. I think it's important to recognize that we started this project in October, November. He did this in the classroom, presented it in December for a school district competition, took it in February, January to the local mall for the regional competition, continued in March to the state competition, and at that point qualified for nationals, created a video pitch to share his project, improved it throughout the way, prototype, done research, to find kids that will stick with something for this long. You don't find athletics that sticks with something this long at times. So building that stamina is something that I'm really proud of and really excited for. So Caleb's Invention this year with the Adams Wilshire, we'll let him share a little bit about that. That he won the Global Change Award for Accessibility in honoring others' needs and looking at supporting other citizens outside of himself. Do you want to share a little bit about what your Invention was? I know it's like I don't want to talk too much.
It's a washer. Now, the water, when I was doing, I was doing laundry for my mom, and I had to, when I went to get clothes off the bottom, I had to literally get in the washer to get them. So I, and while I was doing that, I was thinking of, and it was about school and I was thinking of an idea and that popped into my head. And so I, and it's a platform that would drag clothes up or down, or frontwards in your front loader. So it, and it would just bring clothes out to you, so you don't have to bend over. And it, it's good for people with disabilities, elderly, or children, so they can get clothes in the washer. Or just people that, or people like me.
Because I've been in my washing machine too.
It can be a friend.
And I know I can fix a couple of things. Do you want to add anything else? Well, I just want to congratulate Caleb, because this project was amazing and the idea was terrific. And I really want to say thank you to the family, because as the teacher, we can't, we only can allow so much time in the classroom for this project, and it does take a lot of time. And we've provided two days a week that they could work on it in class, where we could provide lessons to show them the whole process of brainstorming through the invention process. And I combined with science, because the problem solving, invention and plan to method go along really well together. And so that's where we start, so we do lessons and then they take it from there. He said he was in school, he knew he had to come up with a problem. He was at home, and that was the problem, that one of the problems that he came up with. But I also know as a mother of children who have done this competition for years themselves, and three boys that went through it for years, that it does take a lot of family input too. So I did want to give you, you all your support. Your parents have to be there as the sounding board. They also have to be able to pose questions to their children, so they could, when they're in a struggling position, not to give them the answer, but to pose those right questions, so they can start thinking about how to solve those problems. And it is a time commitment, both financially and time commitment for families as well. So I do appreciate it, and Garwood, actually the whole district, but I can speak for Garwood. We require it as a project for sixth grade for a science project. And we have had amazing turnout, and we also had amazing successes, first national one. But, and then we, so that, just having all of those support pieces in place. And so families also have to be able to support that. I just wanted to recognize the family as well. Is there anything that you guys want to share?
And just a process for a parent. Like I actually called, I emailed right before, he came up with his idea and said, is this required? Because I knew he's a kid, it's gonna be stressful on him, he's going to use that 504 plan for reading. Like I knew it's gonna be stressful on him, like I don't want to, another parent that wants to do the project for him, that's not what I want to do. Like I want, I want him, so he had the idea. So then, I'm an occupational therapist, so I'm like, that's great, I guess. And I didn't realize how great it'd be till he kept going with it. And I'm like, okay, he created his own model, I helped him like the grammar writing, he posted, he came up with it all. And we learned about America's Disability Act, ADA for our last name, so I was like, well, he's like, really happy since. So I'm like, yeah, apparently. Because they loved it. And I just thought, I remember I dropped him off that morning, he just looked at Garwood and said, I'm just so proud, I don't care what your grade is, you finished this project, you did a great job. He had his little working model, like non-working models, he built and everything, like I was just proud, not a cardboard. I was really proud of him. And I'm like, so I didn't know at that time he was possibly going on, to see him go all these ways, like wow, it's just so cool to see him. And I hope it's a great confidence builder for him, and it makes me a mom, like never doubt your kids' abilities, like they did awesome, so I'm really proud of him.
We had some struggles with the national. He didn't want to do the video, right? There was a lot of, a lot of fighting about, let's get the video. It's good, the video doesn't have to be perfect. Because he's a perfectionist, strives for perfection. It doesn't have to be perfect, we'll submit it. You're not gonna quit, you know, he didn't want to, you know, I don't want to. You know, I think it's exactly what you spoke, it's a present appearance to go on, and submit the video even though, you know, you don't know what the outcome is gonna be. And it was well worth it, wasn't it Caleb?
And it becomes much more public. So we had a lot more things in front of bigger crowds and bigger people and, you know, news interviews and, you know, all of those pieces. And that's another piece that not all kids are comfortable with. I always say at the beginning, it's a lot like The Voice, they're not actually allowed to put their name on anything, put it into judging. So it's a blind judge. So I was like, it's safe. Nobody knows who you are, nobody is looking at you and judging you. They're just looking at these amazing ideas, and these kids come up with phenomenal things. So along with, obviously, COVID has changed our entire world. Usually this opportunity to go to nationals is held in Dearborn, Michigan, at the Henry Ford Innovation Museum, which is phenomenal. But Caleb won a $200 gift, Amazon gift card recognition, a membership to the Henry Ford Museum for one year for the whole family. And I know that also as a national invitation, there was a scholarship from the Inventive Hope Program that offered them $500 to help with that travel. So it's something that they're still considering, possibly when that things do open up. And if there's anything that we can do to help support that endeavor. As taking my own child last year, it was phenomenal and such a learning opportunity. But you have a great break in there, and we just want to say congratulations and celebrate a little bit of you as well. So I have a special hand. Thank you so much for sharing.
Can we take a picture of you and you guys?
Yeah. There's supposed to be a picture.
Oh. Why don't you send your right piece? Oh, okay. And then, because I'm scared of us, you guys.
You guys did.
And then we'll mail you the certificate, the board chair signs the certificate. Last two, three, and we'll put it in our newsletter. Congratulations.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
I think we have spoken to.
I'm taking a picture.
And we're checking your logs.
Yeah. You just texted to me, I have nothing to add.
I've got an idea why he was talking. I took a video of why he was talking. He was very.
You know, I'm very.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are you ready? I'm just saying, for my chapter. Is it a Wednesday or not?
You can say it's Monday.
All right, that was wonderful. Oh, yeah. Our future is bright. Oh my gosh, we think something beyond ourselves. Okay. All right, Mr. Wallace.
So Madam Chair, Madam Board, Dr. Meyer. It's always a very thing where I have to follow, like that. Because this is not very exciting. But regardless, for this month's budget report, we actually have, the last two months we didn't have any, so we have the budget here. I'm gonna focus most of my comments on June, since it's the more recent information. But you can see sort of where we were at May and then the changes in June. But even in May, we were tracking, you know, if we look at the beginning balance, and our gap between where we were in May 2019 and maybe 2020, around $8 million, has been sort of consistent throughout the year. So we're sort of maintaining, you can see our percentages of revenues are similar to previous years, a little lower this year. The percentage, but very close to last, expenditures are sort of in the ballpark. I'll skip the charts, because the June ones are better. But as we look at June, we're getting definitely a clearer picture where we're gonna end up for the year. And we're not done, and that's why I put preliminary up here for June. You know, just on the title, because we, we're definitely, the fiscal year ends June 30th. But we have a few things that happen. We still have some state revenues that will come in, and property taxes that will come in past June 30th that we accrue back to, to this fiscal year. And we also have some expenses that haven't been officially charged this year that will. In other words, let's say we had a, something that we purchased and it arrived on June 20th, and we sent it to checkout, and so that may not have hit this accounts payable reporting period, but when the dollars hit, we accrue some of those expenses back this year. So you have to accrue expenses on when they happen. Revenues are different, those are actually accrued based on when they're measurable and available. So since our profit taxes are measurable, available, and we'll get them until the end of August, we accrue them back. So, but we're tracking it, if we look at where we were in previous years, our year-to-date, revenue is pretty similar to last year. This, I didn't have an asterisk, so I had 108%, because that was just the actual period after we did all accruals. So this is more of a before the accruals happened. And I expect that about that 1% difference, because our levy has become a more important part of our revenues. And also revenues are probably down a little bit because of the state holdbacks, honestly. The 10% state holdback, some of the monies that we were gonna get, they just didn't get. As far as that for the governor for this year. So if we look at the expenditure side, there's a pretty big jump between May and June. And the reason for that is that that's, we accrue our salaries. So the teachers, for example, have, are done working mid-June. And they work their contract, but they get a check in July and August. So we accrue those, but they haven't gone out yet, obviously, for July checks will soon. But we charge those back, so we know what the balance of those contracts are, and we actually charge those this fiscal year. So our expenditures go up greatly in June, because it's reflecting expenditures, not in June, but projected salary benefit expenditures for most staff in July and August. Some staff, I don't know if I'm gonna get too much in the weeds, but some staff, actually, they, like for myself, I'm a year-round employee. So I end June 30th and start July 1st, our teachers. End August 31st and start September 1st, but the two months are charged back. So that's why June always sees this big jump. And in fact, when we're looking at the year-to-date on a lot of our salaries and benefits, you know, when I look at that, it's hard. In a perfect world, we would spend 8.33% of our salaries and benefits every month, on 12, right? Well, when I look at an August report, that's not the case, because I accrue between one year and another year. So really, when I start looking at salaries and benefits to see how we're tracking for the fiscal year, it's really September, October, November, that three months, because that's sort of full payroll, everybody's on board at that point. And then I go, well, I should be right around 8.3%, I should be right around 25% for the year. If we were tracking like a 28% in of those three months compared, and remember, I can get worried saying, well, what's going on? Are we, did I budget bad? Did we add a bunch of people, but we know we have other revenues coming? But we have, we're gonna see why. For our outstanding financial balance, you know, where we end up this year is to be determined. Some of those accruals coming back, and some of the late expenditures. And also during the audit process, the auditors do work on us, and they see some corrections that we made, coding and other things. So some of those can happen through our audit. The audit process, we've already started that, and that report comes to you in September or October. I can't remember, I don't understand, typically it's October. But ours are tracking pretty good. You know, Trista Thompson had a few questions I sort of touched on, but I'll get more specific on what she's had. So she asked, one, property tax supplemental levy is 63.18, and 65.52 for June, will we receive more levy taxes for 2018-20? And he asks, how long will we continue to receive those late dollars? And that's a yes, yeah, so those are accrued back. So technically, all the property taxes, when everybody pays their bill on June 20th. The county doesn't really get through July and August, and it takes them a month or two to process that and get the dollars. And so when we get those, those gets charged back this year or recorded. So if you look at, you know, last year when our overall revenues were, were up, that's sort of why you have to wait. Plus, there's are some state dollars that come in, and they call it the July payment. And they get accrued back, it's just when the state's timing giving us the dollars. So goofy that they take that long.
So then on that revenue though, we're, it's budgeted based off of?
I, and this budget right here, like this supplement, if by law, well, not by law, I have to, I can only budget what the voters approved. So that 8,99534 is our supplemental levy approved amount that the voters approved, so that's my budget.
Okay, so we should be receiving that amount?
We should be, sometimes we receive a little less, sometimes we receive a little more. Because of previous taxes. So let's say someone didn't pay their taxes for five years, and now they caught up, well, I may get more, or vice versa.
Excited, but I'm still trying to.
Right, no, that's right. Yeah, and that, that's the same, you know, so that number for sure is, that's a hard set number based on the voter approved levy.
Okay.
The.
And then what's the local tax?
The local tax, yeah, is, well, you notice the variance between, why is this at 36 and why is this at 131? You have a local. And there are two reasons. One, the, there are some varies between total levy, actual budget. There's a, I'm sorry.
This is gonna be a very long one, I think, and it seems like this might be something like, that's long. Does this just be a brief overview of our monthly budget? Is this something you could look out with?
It's a pleasure of the board, I just ask the question.
And I'm sorry to interrupt you, I just know we have a lot of ground covering light.
I, I'm taking your direction.
We have to be all right, we have to meet with Brian, or if we're just trying on those specific questions, more on a one-on-one basis? I don't mind that, they, this is a working board meeting, and so I assume that, you know, other people may have the same questions that they would want the answers to. So if he wants to be tabled and addressed at the next meeting, I'm fine with that. But these were questions that I did have, did have to Brian based on the information that he's provided. And I do believe that the question should be answered in public. I don't mind tabling the questions for another meeting. But we don't want to hear from you at the beginning, this is your own meeting this month. When you do a budget.
Correct.
So could you answer the tour question?
I will try to, she had 200 questions, I'll be as quick as I can. Okay. The tour question, yes, part of the tour calculation is there's a thing called a personal property exemption. That's part of that calculation of the tour levy amount, but we have been reporting those revenues on its own separate line. It was just sort of a coding thing.
Okay, so they're, in that statement, could there be co-mainly or not?
They're not co-mainly, it's just sort of how I'm reporting it. And I can, you know, I can correct that if you want, that's sort of.
Well, I was just looking at, we've got 36%, but now we've got 131, so I was just trying to balance that out.
Correct. And, and the tour levy was gonna get another 50% of that coming in with the next property tax payments. That's one reason why it's short. The other is that personal property exemption, which I could, I guess throw more of the local tax instead of other local.
Well, I'm just trying to understand.
Sure, not, I was just explaining the reason. Then you talk about the other instructional program, is it 85% in May, it's 130% for June? And accrual of those July and August salaries is the primary reason. We also had some budget code corrections that add to the variance. And that, and you also asked if more expenditures were in that area. For both questions you had, our expenditures are pretty much done, because salaries have been accrued. There might be some little stuff with.
Right, but not.
Open scales, no. And then the support services program budget, same thing that you asked about, it was at 88, now it's at 104. You know, what causes that stay cruel is the primary reason for the month-to-month increase. Actions are a little above due to budget code corrections, and we did have, in those support areas, we had more classified staff this year benefited than I projected, and so that, some of our costs were higher. And there are not many expenditures left, so I think that's it for those questions. The other thing that when I really look at budget, what I get concerned as a business manager is, you know, coding is the coding. But I really get, what I can hope to get, is that our overall is in line. And our overall expenditures at this point are 99.9, they're gonna be over 100%, but our revenues are gonna be a little higher because of increased state revenues. So I think, I feel pretty good about that. So a lot of times when I'm looking at the budget, I even tell my principals on their building budgets, I don't really, if you go over in one line item, and just don't go over in every line item, you gotta make it up in the other. And so some of those variants that you see is typical of a school budget, because it's such a dynamic thing. But really, you want to look at it overall, and I feel pretty good about it.
Yeah. I was just helping me understand.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And that's all I have, any more questions?
I have one question.
Okay.
The difference, I think it's like 460,000 for the excesses transferred in and out, has got the difference of the support services program? And was that due to the coronavirus COVID thing?
Where are you?
So the bottom, the negative, the credit, or the, yeah, the 33, yeah.
Oh, that negative?
30 million, yeah, and then if you look at the prior.
Oh, yeah, this negative is because we haven't received those property taxes yet.
Okay.
That will be different.
Okay, I didn't know if it had anything to do with the original support services.
Yeah, no, well, maybe a little bit of that, but the bulk of this is that our expenditures are at 99.9, and our revenues are 90, this is gonna be closer to 100. This 5.8 is gonna be closer, 8.9, that's gonna pick up that 3.1. It's really, because our revenues come in slower than our expenditures.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I was just looking at the difference between the two months.
Yeah, those accruals are bigger.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Our goal is to get, the end of this is for us to have a board approval on the parent survey. But we want to give you a little bit of background, a little bit of context, there's been a lot going on. I try to keep you updated with the board update, but I just can't keep, I mean, things are changing on a daily basis, so it's really important that we kind of update you a little bit. So I'm also gonna go as fast as possible, but Ms. Exton and I really wanted to be able to tell you where we are with all of this COVID coronavirus school reopening plan. So this is a proposed timeline, and we have a framework for reopening plan. But we want to start, as I said last time when we met, we want to start with getting a parent survey, and then we're gonna do another staff survey, so the board has all of the information, you feel like we need to make a decision. So we're really interested at the end of this, that the board says, these are additional questions, or edits the questions that we would like to know for data for you, all you folks. So I just want to remind everyone, it's been super difficult, and I think the teachers would, I've been hearing from a lot of teachers, it's hard to sometimes when you are either stay home, or you have this blended, and we have so much uncertainty in next year. We have to keep reminding ourselves, and myself every day as well, I have to remind myself, our mission is still our mission. Like we really care about each and every individual kid. Looking at what Caleb did when he was here, it just reminds me like, this is why we do what we do. So for us, like every single day, no matter if we have to have blended at home, back face-to-face, I just want all of this, I have to remind myself too, so I'm not speaking like condescendingly to anybody. I'm reminding myself more than anybody, it's like, we need to remember each individual child is really important. I mean, that gave me the biggest goosebumps, to see what that kid, did you hear that mom say? What his ditch with self-confidence, I mean, that was amazing. So our mission is still our mission. I want you to look at this board, we would like, this is proposed. If you would like, if any of you want to talk about different, this is not set in stone. I'm just putting a draft out there. And Lisa and I have done a lot of work in going to the very end of when we want to have things out. We really, really, if you're looking, kids are coming back September 8th. From the bottom, staff, staff, instructional staff, their contracts start on Monday, August 31st. We really want to have our final plan to our families by July 29th. So, and then if we have to redo anything with current conditions, August 11th. So let's start at the top. We would like to have the parent survey finalized tonight, and we would like to be able to send it out, so that families get five days. We feel like if it's more than five days, it actually like people forget about it. So if you have a kind of shorter timeframe and just say, come on, open this up and do it right now, it's really short. We'd like to do that, we additionally would like, I know I did that initial staff feedback at the very end of the school year. We feel like there's additional information we'd like to ask staff now. So we'd like to send that out tomorrow with the board's approval. Then we are going to work to finalize a draft, we have a draft framework, but we really need this input, and then we need to present to the board, and then for you to give input to us. We'd like to be able to bring you a draft plan and give it to you by Friday, July 24th. So between, once we get the input, we're gonna. So between, once we get the input, we're gonna put that all together and I will send out to you the results of the input. But then, uh, Ms. Exton and I will work with the district leadership to get the draft proposal reopening plan, submit it to you. I will email it to all of you by Friday, July twenty-fourth so that you have time to, to look at that and garner any questions. And then at the Tuesday, July twenty-eighth meeting, we would like to be able to have you give feedback input. You can certainly do it along the way, but we'd like to be able to have you, um, finalize that because I feel like it'd be really important that families, we're getting a lot of questions. Um, a lot of the schools down south have put out their plans, but they start in mid-august. So none of the, uh, no, no districts up in region one have finalized their plans yet. We're meeting again as a group on Thursday. And everybody wants those gonna be doing their parent surveys. So we're right in line with everyone up here, but I feel unless the board disagrees with us, we would really like to have our families' information by July twenty-ninth. We're gonna remain flexible and open because this is very changing guidance. And then we'd like to see if there's any updates. We'd really like to revisit this to make sure if you have any input before August eleventh, that's your first August meeting, that we can republish either the same one or if there's any updates that we republish our plan August eleventh. And then, um, and even if we need to, the second board meeting, certainly do that again the second board meeting. So do you have any input? And you cert, you don't even have to answer right now. You can think about it tonight. I don't, I'm not saying we have to make the final decision because you can certainly, um, talk about it. Uh, right now, open session, you can send an email. I just would really like to be able to at least get a, a truffle on the first part for the parent input. I would really like to send that out tomorrow. So if people, um, have thoughts about this?
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, good.
I did, I thought it was all good except for number two. I feel like the verbiage is leading on the parent survey, um, about the masks.
Oh, good, okay. That, um.
I'm, I'm good.
Trustee Kristen, would you mind, can I, we have that as the very last item out here. And the reason why is because I wanted to, like, actually have Chrissy take edits while you guys are saying it. So I've never ready to go.
Yep.
Um, and, and I, I know, I think you're right. Um, I just wanted to say a little bit, the factors to consider. Our care funding, I re, I did, uh, tell the board that we were planning on filling in staffing holes, remember? If there's bubbles, we've talked about that. Uh, we talked about technology, that is the big number of increases for that. We've talked, had a tech meeting of the minds today talking about that. Our family internet access by our latest survey with our families, we're at eighty-four percent. So sixteen percent right now are missing this. But I sent you a copy in your board update, uh, we're trying to get that grant. And half the businesses are coming on with us to try to get more access. And then we have health and safety needs. Um, you can see our disinfectant checks. Uh, Nurse Judy did a order eleven, you know, touch-free temperature thermometers, um, PPE. So that's the care responding operations. Mr. Wallace is working with those departments, which it involves everything, all, all of those. We've talked quite a bit about that. I just wanted to make sure and put that out there.
And then, uh, I'm gonna jump down to the parent choice and comfort level. I always try to look for the silver lining in that situation. And the pandemic, I think, has offered a couple of, kind of, silver linings for us. The biggest one for me has just been the growth in our teachers and their ability to think about how education can be provided in a blended kind of environment. And we know going into this year that we have parents who are going to be concerned about sending their kids back to school. Um, and we are going to be prepared to meet them where they are and provide, um, education for their kiddos in, in the way that meets Lakeland's standards and expectations for learning. Um, so I, I, that's a big part of this for, for me. That's a big part of this framework is being able to look a parent in the eye and say, we know what the standards are. We have a way of identifying where your child is and comparison with those standards. And we have a way of tracking whether or not they're making the gains they need to make at the proficient end of the school year. That's for me, um, leading teaching and learning our district is my top priority. Um, so that will be a big part of how this framework gets put together. And actually, I think we've lost out on some ADA over the years with, um, families who, for, for whatever personal reason, um, choose to homeschool. And if, there are, people do it for lots of reasons, but they often come to me and ask, do you have an, an idea of a great curriculum I can be using? How can I get, how can I look at Lakeland's curriculum to see that I'm, my kids are staying on track? And we could actually now provide this, um, teaching and learning opportunity for parents who want a homeschool. So there just are a lot of ways to kind of support our entire community with parental choice being a, a top priority. So, um, that is important for you to know. And then that individualized student-centered teaching and learning, we have to continue to really focus on that. If our mission is truly that every child is learning in all environments, academically, socially, emotionally, behaviorally, it has to be individualized and student-centered. And so as we're putting together this framework, that's, um, we're making sure that we're providing opportunities for that to happen.
We won't touch on, I just want to not miss the fact that we do have the student health and social emotional wellness. Um, it's a big deal. And today I spoke at the Chamber, Portland Lane Chamber. One of the biggest questions they have is, how are we keeping in contact? And I said, humans aren't made to have this isolation, like, we're made for relationships. And so we really, really hope that we can create that, even if it's in smaller cohorts. And you'll see in the next slide, but we really would like to create that and make sure we're taking care of our staff. We've done a really good job this last couple of years. Cap has led, uh, staff wellness. We've done a really good job of having kind of fun competitions and things we're doing. We wanna make sure that continues tonight. Sports is always a big question. Also the band choir and speech, uh, competitions. Wanna make sure you guys know, they're not expected to have a final say until August fifth, which is a pretty, I mean, that's, people are thinking that's a really big deal, that it's not, it's being delayed that long. So I just wanted you to know, I thought that was important to you know. Um, here's the framework. I'm sure you've all seen it from the governor and I just wanted to link it in here because we'll put this on the website and then if, um, we'll finalize it in case somebody looks on the website. They like have that accessible. Um, the framework does, so you've probably saw from the state, and our district really has, like I said, a draft framework of how we're looking at this on a continuum. Um, in-person is based on the green. There's a blended model and we'll tell you a little bit more about that. And then there's gonna be the remote online. If we have like an executive order and somebody's telling us, uh, whether it's you folks as a board or whether it's the governor or whoever it may be that has that and is telling us that we need to have too many cases and we need to be back at home, then that's, um, the red. So the state model is based on that green, yellow and red. Our student learning continuum is gonna be based on that green, yellow or red. Um, really parental choice is what's, the parent is ultimately the authority on what's best for their kids. And we feel like some people, even if we're in green in the very beginning of the year, that they will say, I still don't feel comfortable, I wanna keep my kids at, at my house. And so that's when Ms. Exton was talking about the online environment. We can create that for them from the very start, so.
So, uh, we just wanted to make you aware of some resources that we have. Um, the student learning continuum, which we built last spring, kind of as we were flying the airplane, trying to figure out remote learning, we built that learning continuum. Uh, so we have that framework and we'll continue to add to it as we go into the fall and winter. Um, keeping our fingers crossed for vaccines in summer so we can just get back to normal soon. Um, but some of the things that we are looking at, because in that blended model, um, it could be that we have kids who are in school Mondays and Wednesdays, half of the kids, and the other half Tuesdays and Thursdays. And we want to make sure that the kids who are at home on their off days are still participating and learning. Um, and so we're, we are kind of tossing around, um, live streaming the lessons, the core lessons. So for the primary students, it could be, um, their phonics instruction, their reading instruction, their math instruction. Um, so that if you're at home, you could watch live and kind of participate remotely that way. Or it will also be recorded so the parents are working, but they wanna participate with their kids to, and watch the learning with them. They could watch the recorded version that night. Uh, but one of the things we'll need to purchase are lapel mics so that the, as we know from just the board meetings, that the people who are watching via Zoom can't hear very well. Uh, so the lapel mics work with Bluetooth in the Chromebooks so that, um, the voice is really crisp and clear. Uh, in our tech meeting of the minds, meeting this morning or a second, we talked about continuing to build that, um, digital tech resource collection. Michelle Stanford started that during our, um, remote learning last spring. Um, ongoing professional development, when we survey the staff, one of the questions to them will be, what specific professional development do you feel like you need to be more comfortable, more confident, more efficient and effective in this remote learning environment? Because if we, if we were starting school today, we would be in yellow, which would be a blended model. Half the kids in school at any given time. Um, so we, it's really important that we make sure we're supporting the teachers as they're working to teach the kiddos. And then, um, really looking at individualized learning plans and filling gaps as we move forward. That, that has to be the very first thing that we're thinking about. Knowing that our kids were out of school for an entire quarter of this last school year, they're going to have some gaps and we can't ignore those. We have to fill them. But we also can't delay the new content or we, we just perpetuate that gap. So we have to do both at the same time. Uh, and then, yeah, linked in there is the teaching and learning handbook. So, um, at the August board meeting, we're gonna have a curriculum workshop prior to the board meeting where I will kind of walk you through, um, where to find old things that you're gonna wanna take a look at. But this teaching and learning handbook has our instructional calendars in there. So you can go in and look by grade level and subject at, um, those instructional calendars. You can see the standards, um, the resources that we're using, the assessments that are in there. So you get a kind of an understanding of what teaching looks like in the classroom. So that's a good for you. And we're continuing to add to that.
Okay, so this is the parent survey. And these are the questions that we would like to discuss and have for feedback. So let's start with the one that you were talking about.
Right, it is, uh, number two. I think that if masks are recommended, the last sentence, I think is good. But I think that the first two are some of the leading, leading questions.
Okay, so how would the board like to write that? Just the last sentence, are you thinking? If masks are recommended for school reopening, what is your preference? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, see, we're on.
I mean, that's just to lay it out there. Because.
Well, it, it may change multiple times before we get there. So I think keeping it simple is good. You know, maybe it's, you know, if masks are recommended by, you know, health officials. Because anybody could recommend one. But maybe if, if it was framed to say, if it's recommended by somebody in the forty.
That would be yes. Well.
That's scary.
If, if the purpose of a mask is to reduce the chance of COVID, COVID spreading, which might require our school closure and quarantine situations. Um, I think that I'm, we're telling them what the purpose of the mask is. So I don't see why not, would have to come off, but maybe the first one because we're telling them, you know, there's a recommendation to wear a mask. Do you wanna wear it?
So is everyone okay if I take away this first sentence? Yeah, okay. Let's see, let's see. Um, okay, so then, what about the next, uh, sentence?
Actually, you have a good point, Michelle. I mean, just giving them a framework of.
Why?
Why?
Yeah. But even that is leading and that's subjective also.
Okay.
I, I, I don't like it. I just like if they're recommended, whether we recommend it, PhD recommends, whoever's doing the recommendation, what is your preference? Um, I think between the news cycles and the newspapers and everything else, I think we're all very educated on the whole mask, um, recommendations or requirements or what have you. Well, there is the less kind of a perception that everybody's educated. Well, true, the reality is it should be that everybody's educated.
Yeah.
So.
Are we gonna change the if masks are recommended? We're gonna put if masks are a requirement or something, or if masks are, I don't know. You can just mention that, um, trustee and I here. By who would they be recommended? I think it could be recommended by health officials. If they're recommended by health officials or, um.
Well, maybe it needs to be twofold because if masks are required, are parents going to be allowed the option for medical services or whatever?
No, Panhandle Health Department has told us they are not going to require. The governor is not going to require. Um, we've looked at other plans in the state. They've said, like, green is, you know, optional. Some other verbiage that we've had with the yellow is expected. We've not seen any required for yellow in any of the plans that we have previewed, none. So recommended, highly encouraged. We've seen expected down, but we haven't seen required. At this point, I think it would be very safe to say that I don't think anybody, unless you folks decided you wanted to require them, I do not believe that any other district in North Idaho superintendent is willing to require masks in North Idaho. And I actually don't think it's probably gonna happen anywhere. I haven't called tomorrow morning with the other superintendents in the state. And I don't think that anyone in the state will be requiring them.
It's a very politically charged word. Yeah, I think that's why.
Yeah.
And, and would maybe be disruptive to learning, you know, if that was a ban on what you're gonna catch on.
And my point in this too is that I really want the parents to finish the survey and give us their honest opinion without being incited one way or the other.
Uh huh.
Tell me, you know, should, yeah, to try and, yeah, it is.
And I will tell you that this was, remember, the region one superintendents all got together and there was a lot more questions and everyone was putting their two cents in. So isn't necessarily, it's not one that we wrote, it's one that the superintendents wrote. So we're not attached to this, we're fine to make any changes. Is this okay? If masks are recommended for schools to reopen, what is your preference?
Yeah, I mean, that still gives the point across. We'll get there.
So is that okay?
We'll get there again.
Uh, okay. For any good with that, okay. Um, recognizing health and safety students and staff as a paramount force. Are you able to monitor your students' health each morning prior to setting, taking your temperature? And then this one, writing the school to the bus, we would then, if they say yes, it would go automatically to number five. This one is important. Um, Mr. Wallace might wanna give you more details, but we are the, uh, second or third largest in the state geographically for bus miles. So there is no possible way that we can do social distancing and busing is voluntary. Um, it's not something that we are required to do. So this, we are gonna have to get, um, some buy-in from people that want their kids, like, family clusters sitting together. Are they gonna require face masks? This is gonna be a discussion with the board because it will be a longer time on there. And if they wanna ride, so that's gonna be a discussion with the board. We want to be able to have this.
Can we get a little bit money for the buses?
You need to add buses to, dot one buses. Two buses to a route.
Probably not. Well, we'd have to have drivers too. Um, sure, we could probably buy them. I don't know if buses are, you could get that seven. That's it. Um, and others, so, but I, on the buses is that, so a standard bus has twenty-four seats. And maximum for elementary kids is three per seat, so they can fit seventy-two. For high school, middle school routes is closer to, really to, so forty-eight is more typical number. Even though we do have some high school routes that they get over sixty and there's, oh, some. Um, but we definitely, depending on what the model is, could probably get, you know, less, you know, forty-eight or below. But I can't just do twenty-four one per seat. Some recommendations were one area of seats, so twelve. I mean, it's, we, we couldn't really run the, well, I don't have enough drivers, I don't have buses, there's not enough time to do it. I mean, it just doesn't work.
And even if we did get more buses, that means more maintenance. Like you said, people to run them, all of that stuff.
So if. So if, some of it is, are, just the questions for the board to mull over is, be comfortable having the parents accept the risk and, and get on the bus or not. We definitely would try to minimize the number of kiddos on the bus. Would we require to take a temperature when they get on? I don't think we have enough time honestly to do that. So, but I mean, that's, those are sort of discussions and transportation directors have been having with health officials. There's not a perfect answer right now.
Would it be? I wouldn't say I was being facetious about the lessons, but yeah, take it if they want it to.
I don't think it was on the list.
With respect to you saying that the parents just assume the liability, because there are going to be some sort of waiver? That makes sure that because the, the district is not able to provide social distancing, that it's a travel at your own risk, so we are not liable to try.
We do have, we could tweak the similar waiver that we had, like our summer wait program. Where they understand that we're cleaning, we're disinfecting, we're doing what we can, but there's a decreased risk by doing this activity. And they waived that. And so we could certainly have that for.
Well, because my concern is, is if, if we're being recommended to social distance, and that's one of the caveats of this whole COVID dealio. And we cannot do it on a bus. And the parents need, I mean, they need to know that, they need to know that, they need to know, the risk is there and we don't have your back. So that, yeah, I, I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, we could certainly have, we have a template right now that can easily tweak in a few letters to want that additional of signature of parents.
And then we'll ask the schools and then additional information. So we will have comments if they want to put something down. The board will be able to have all of those. And then the only ones we're going to add for staff, on a scale of one to five, how comfortable it would be online blended learning. And they, again, had to do this in the spring, so this is going to give us a gauge in what professional development needs for them to be competent in blended learning. So that's just our initial. We know in talking to tech today, there's going to be some more information that they're going to want, but this is just the first flush for us going forward.
So these just get added to what we're sending to the.
Is everybody familiar with what blended learning is? All the parents, do they know what that means?
Um, we didn't put blended learning in their part. The staff is, but we, yeah, but we'll do it.
Just, just wondering if they, some people would not know.
Yeah, and this is how, this is really how we put for the first one. We did, okay, so we did kind of D.
Yeah, but you followed it up with partially.
That, that really helps. So there it is. You have to find it. Wonderful job.
So that will give us an indication of where people are, I think. So is there any other feedback or input or anything you think we left off that we should add in? That you would, the board would like to know for information, data for making decisions?
Would it be pertinent if a parent marks, I do not intend to send my student back to school this fall? Would it be pertinent to say, you know, are you planning on homeschooling? And then maybe dive into, yeah, can we help you with that? So that you retain the student. I mean, because there's nothing on there for that. But if, if it could, if the, one caveat is to try and adopt a online learning program for those that choose to homeschool or want to incorporate, yeah, into the school district. There's nothing on there, we didn't.
So maybe a follow-up to that would be, would you, if you're planning on homeschooling, would you be interested?
Yeah, that would be a good, we'd ask the question.
Okay, let's put that one in there as number two. Yeah, that's going to be it.
Because for, for families where their kids are currently at school, but maybe it's too scary around with them and they just can't send their kids to school. That probably will change once we figure out the vaccine and we get over this big comp. And we're going to want them to kind of stay on track with their peers. So that's, that's a good follow-up question.
Yeah, so that'll go as number two. Thanks. Okay, yeah, that'd be good. Any other thoughts? We're going to, we'll get this ready and send this out with Survey Monkey tomorrow. We'll do it, I'll do the time and get it ready to go out tomorrow.
We could, for those parents, I don't know how many, look it up, but just to, so that they know that this blended learning or whatever really has always existed in statute, 331619, they can always look up that they, the school districts have the ability to offer the virtual learning outside of, is it IDA?
IDLA.
IDLA, yeah.
And AICL.
Right, and blended programs and blah, blah, blah.
And IDLA is what is actually operated as free content. Kate, they're adding elementary, it was just approved. And they are also lowering their cost from $7 credit to 15. And they're supposed to have a special session coming up. So there is going to be some benefits for IDLA, which is tax pay, also supported. We know it's partially funded by higher tax dollars, so. That's good for them too. Anything else that you feel, information you feel is important for you?
I don't think so. I think you heard it basically, because how do they feel about coming back to school? How do they feel about busing? How do they feel about face covering?
And then this additional, I think they'll, they'll probably get a plethora of things.
I mean, the only thing that we didn't really ask about would have been food services, which is kind of a touchy thing too. Actually getting through the handling and stuff, how if they are going to, you know, they're going to be packing a lot of lunches, you know. That would be the only other thing that is kind of a.
Well, is our food service going to maintain on a grab and go situation like they have?
Actually, missed meeting with Mr. Doyle tomorrow. Sort of advantage of, of having had our partnership with Charles for so long is that he has the resources of that company. And they've come out with a lot of different ways to provide food service. Anywhere from staggering cafeteria to having kids go to the cafeteria and walk back to the classroom, the classroom, which actually some schools have done in the past just because the cafeteria is bigger. But even if that doesn't work, you can't get the space, you know, literally providing grab and go meals at the, at the central kitchen, getting out to the schools and the kids to just sort of pick up the sack lunch. And, I mean, so I'm going to talk about all those options and I'm sure we'll have a couple ideas depending on what level, green or or orange or red.
So are you, are you asking the question about the kids who are going to be at home on those days and will they have access to those grab and go meals?
No, it wasn't. Now that you bring it up. No, I think trustee Anius has, I do think we do need to add something with regard to providing.
I'm sure that we're not excited about that.
Because that's a big part of, of school for a lot of kids. Well, that might be providing lodgers.
It might be different.
A little bit different. I mean, we're going to run a program for sure, but it may not be having kids. You know, for example, like Spirely Elementary is a really small cafeteria.
Right.
The smallest one, so that may not be, we already know we're like on Salvar, right?
Yeah.
I mean, so some of those, those decisions are pretty easy. But, and there might not be a question to ask of, because they're already participating in the grab and go throughout the summer.
This is, I think that's a follow-up we need to do as a group, because you brought up a good point. If we go to the blended model, there is going to be, there is that grab and go component, which isn't able to do with a waiver, so that's going to be a good.
Yeah, that waiver ends it. Well, I'd have to take it with the guys.
Because those kids are in attendance at school.
They're in attendance at school.
They should be able to get their lunches.
Right, we're going to have to look and figure.
And I asked that, there's two programs that are running on as far as like the current program that with the grab and go we're doing now is actually a different program than National School Lunch Program, it's a summer feeding program. So we're sort of doing claims under that. And so I don't know if we're able to do claims under that, let's say for the kids who are not physically in school that day. And also do the national school lunch program at the same time when the kids are in school, because right now we aren't able to do both. But there's been a lot of waivers given and I'll catch up on what are our options, current options. And of course, it's been very fluid with that program. I'm sure some changes, additional waivers may may come down from that at the federal and state level, just as everybody works to do this.
Okay, I understand. Just for you guys to have in the back of your minds, the timeline is pretty tight because we felt really strongly that if we're going to have to start in this blended model, families need to be aware that their kids are not going to be in school every day. And we're going to do the very best of our ability, make sure that the whole family is on the same schedule. And so that if there is a high school student in the home and parents are working, at least there's somebody watching out for little people. But we do have families whose oldest child might be five going to kindergarten this year. And obviously that five-year-old can't be home alone, along with that are working every day, so they're learning from home. So they're going to need as much time as possible to be able to work out those arrangements. So we're pushing ourselves to make sure we get it all done and really short.
And that might affect base, because some families might have used base differently. That might affect our space. We also, music and choir is at this, if we're in yellow, it's not recommended. So those teachers be able to give up some space. And then they'd be able to help with smaller group interventions. Also staff, we have really thought a lot, not just because the staff is here, but we have thought a lot about the staff, because this is a shift. Just like we had to build the airplane in flight last spring. This is a shift. And if we're going to be looking at this, the Panhandle Health, when they met with the superintendents last week, they said one case in a cohort, like if we could try to minimize our cohorts, which is why they don't, they want like the music people to come in, they want lunches in the classroom. They want people to be coming into the classroom versus the kids going at elementary out to different places. And at secondary, they, you know, wanted to see how could we minimize the cohort amount? Because if anybody has a confirmed case, which Gordon Lane had two students, one of both comprehensive high schools, and it affected the entire program, has to get shut down for 14, or those sports programs have to be shut down for 14 days. And there has to be contact tracing. So within six feet, the social distancing for more than 15 minutes. That creates, so we know that it's going to come up pretty quickly. And for staff, we want to give them time to prepare. If we're doing a schedule that's Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, Fridays, that, I mean, we need to make sure staff is also like mentally and logistically prepared as well. So we're thinking of families and staff and everyone.
With respect to what you just said about lunches going back to the classroom, are we envisioning that children will not be going outside?
No, outside for sure. They want them to go outside.
They can't.
They just don't want them in the lunchroom.
All right.
So they'll be able to play.
Absolutely.
Energy, yes.
Oh my gosh, we have immunity at the elementary level.
So, so in all fairness to getting the, I think the question is the dialogue and changes to the main. We just get those out into the program and just know the, you know, the thoughts about how the lunch program, the food is going to work with in school blended, you know, it's going to be a different framework and they're going to have to understand that. But I think, yeah, I think in the, in the essence of getting it to the parents, I think that the group model should go out.
Okay, so we'll get that input and we'll follow the timeline. And then anybody want to look at the time on the dinner? Is everyone okay with that?
Are you going to link this in?
Yeah, Chrissy will link this in by tomorrow on the website. And then I will share it with you when I get back to my computer. And then these links are just important information in the back. All right, thank you all very much. Just not anything else we need to have up?
Okay, to the consent agenda, we have the minutes of the previous meetings from June 3rd and the minutes from June 30th, special board meeting, HR and administrative principles. Can we break this down or can we approve this as one block?
Yeah, that's what I was saying. See if nobody has any questions. Now, if you're ready, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as a block. So say to sign.
I'll put a motion in a second. Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Bring that motion here. Okay, on to the action items. First one is approve or deny the updated policy 1100 membership. This was read, had first read at the last meeting. No comment was received, uh, frame of changes. So I would ask for a motion to approve the updated policy 1100.
I would move to approve the updated policy 1100 membership.
I'll second that. A motion in a second. Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Bring that motion here. Next is to approve or deny the adoption of policy 1315, district continuous improvement plan. We also had the first read at the last meeting. And again, mentioned, there's no corrections made to that. So can I have a motion to approve the adoption of policy 1315, district continuous improvement plan? I'll make a motion to approve adoption of policy 1315, district continuous improvement.
Second motion.
Have a motion in a second. Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Bring that motion here. And next is approve or deny the move policy 6400 principles, replaced by existing board policy 6320, evaluation of administrative staff. So this is for removing the old policy, the new policy extends it correct. I hope that you might be able to speak to that, which we place against. Do you have questions on that?
Yeah, why are we replacing it?
Policy 6320, evaluation administrative staff is for all administrative staff. The policy 6400 just for principles. Ms. Sexton and I read through it and it doesn't have any information that is included in 6320. It caused some confusion recently, so we thought it'd be best to remove it.
My only objection to that is that ISBA actually lists both as individual policies. I do understand the confusion.
There's, and you, you can certainly read through it if you want to take some time. If you read through 6400 and then you read through 6320, there's nothing in 6400 that is not already addressed in 6320. So to eliminate the confusion in the future, we thought that that would be best. But the board can certainly read through it and table it till next meeting.
I would, I would be comfortable with that, not going to turn it to table it until next meeting.
And consensus?
Yes. So I'll make a motion that we table the removal of policy 6400 until the next board meeting.
Have a motion in a second. Table it. Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bring that motion here. Next is for the alternate authorization for certified employees 071428. If you have questions for speaking to this. Okay, no questions further. So can I have a motion to approve or deny the alternate authorization for certified employees 071428?
I'll make a motion to approve the alternate authorization for certified employees 071428.
Have a motion in a second. Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Bring that motion here. Next is to approve or deny the one-year leave of absence for certified employees 071428. Anybody have questions on that?
We have had a similar with press in the past. My first year here, we had a teacher in the Idaho Core coaching program. And they take a yearly leave of absence. The board actually approved a second year leave of absence for that employee. It's an excellent program, great PD, and they also are able to support our district. It's an excellent program, great PD, and they also are able to support our district. We even until physically became impossible to continue the Lakeland Core program, coaching program. So it has done a lot of great things for our district, and we are definitely in support of this.
I'll put a motion to approve the one-year leave of absence for certified employees 071428. I'll second that. I'll put a motion in a second. Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Bring that motion here. Next is the life agreement for access to district property as presented. Do you have questions? Brian can answer those.
So I guess, understanding that we're letting them still use the driveway until we change our mind?
So, yeah, so the background first is, we didn't really even know the way to use our life. So Ms. Parker came up to me, and she's lived there for a long time. And she's looking to sell, and then she's on her own map, and now she knows. And she's looking for a private party who had concerns about, so, you know, I, not knowing if we could give these or not, talked with Megan Dowell, and she, but you know, that we really can't give easement to a private party. Maybe another government agency can, but not private. So that, but, you know, to give them a little peace of mind, as Manny said, we give them this license until we tell them no. So really not out anything, right? Because we can always, you know, not allow them to.
Be good neighbors.
I think it's trying to be a good neighbor, where that is. We're unlikely to ever use that part of property, so it's sort of no arm, no file likely. And like, the board is definitely something the board needs to have a decision on, kind of property. But if we had a license that we could give it to Ms. Parker or the future owner, and if you gave us that proof, that'd be great. And then later, if we thought it was a problem, we could always, okay.
Those aren't PDBs, but it's just.
No, it's not an easement.
It's really, it's just more acknowledging that, yes, we know this is on there, we give you license to use it. We have the right to change our mind. This isn't binding, but correct. We do understand that it's the driveway, and that we have a license to use it.
Right.
Just that makes them feel.
Correct.
At least they understand.
But it's not, it's not an easement, where it's get recorded county or anything.
Any other questions on that?
So if we extend this to Ms. Parker, would we then have to extend it to the new owner once?
Yes, I think we want them to sign so they're aware. So I was hoping the board would just allow us to have that license for whoever that homeowner property is. If you want me just to give it to Ms. Parker, we could, and then if she sells, I would come back. If you wanted to vote for the second owner, I mean, she is open to sell, so.
Well, the draft agreement is between the school district and Ms. Parker.
Correct, well, the agreement does act, I don't know who the second owner would be, so.
Right, so I guess what I'm trying to get clarified on is maybe we thought that right now, extend it to Ms. Parker. And then upon sale of her home, whomever the new owners are, we can just go ahead and extend or offering them another license.
Correct, and I guess I'd ask the board that if that happens, could I just then have the authority to sign another agreement with the new owner and not come before the board? Or I can come before the board a second time if that's what you choose.
So how about if we have the language of, because it's still a license that we can terminate, but a transferable license?
Okay.
That way, if, you know, then it can follow, because at any point, you know, it could follow the property, and at any point, we could, you know, pull the license.
Sounds like what I'm saying, that have it transferable, and it's attached to the property rather than a present.
I mean, you can offer it to Ms. Parker as, I doubt, but yeah.
Can I, the only concern, so that normally, you would say language like current owner, successors or signs, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
We intentionally wanted to avoid that language, because that is the language that's generally used in easement, where they are in with the land when they come across it. So I would suggest, like Mr. Wallace was offering, if the board could approve this one today, and if the owner changes, it could be as simple as changing the name, it could go on a consent agenda, and it would be the exact same form.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it be an easy way to, you know, it's there, but it doesn't start running with the land?
Okay.
So my question is, since everything changes hands, how are we going to know that that happens? Is it part of the title search? Or how are we gonna be notified to know that if it's not really recorded, and it's just this agreement between us?
Well, I think, because that's why that agreement wouldn't be void then, because it's not with the new owner. So the new owner, on selling, they had concerns, so. I guess I wouldn't know if, let's say, Ms. Parker sells, and we know, we signed an agreement with the owner, they sell for years. I wouldn't know, but they would not, the new owner would not have the license from us, because it's specific to that one individual.
Not like, to follow that land?
No, the license is with the owner.
Figure out where your boundaries are, why would that not come up if this is not part of the property? And that would show up at the county.
But I don't think it would be recorded at the county, I think it would be created between the individual.
Well, it's not an easement.
Right, but it's, so we put that line.
And there's no, it wouldn't impact the legality of the document, if it's recorded or not. Frankly, whoever sells that property is going to have a disclosure issue, because they have the driveway, it does not run over their property, and they only have a license, it's not an easement. So if the board is not, and we can add maybe another paragraph into it, just to amp up the fact that this, I mean, we stay in there for the land, but make sure that if there's any ownership change, that it will not send the owner, and you'll have to come before the board if you want, I mean, we can add some potential languages to make sure that we put that word on the owner to come back before the board and then ask again.
Because there's no way for this board to know who the future owner's gonna be, right? I mean, we don't know, they might be trucking for oil over there, and next thing you know, we've got all this pollution flow, or this you high school, I mean, we just don't know, right? Right, 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 right. Yeah, I mean, what's it gonna be? Rich school district.
So we could certainly just add some of that additional language in that, if we approve it, move forward. Yeah, anything, or do you wanna have us come back and with the new language, or?
I'd like to see the new language, maybe just, maybe sure.
Better we just give it to Ms. Parker, and make a new person, if we approve it this way, the new person. I, I mean, it shouldn't change hands very often, maybe the new owners should, maybe we should approve it, just if they ask for it. Why not ask for it? If they see that, if I have a property, they might just.
The driveway.
Driveway.
So I'm good with changing the language, and then bring it back in next meeting?
Sure, I mean, that's.
Start approval?
If that's your intention.
So what are we gonna change language to, Ben?
Just to add the extra, I assume this is Ms. Dowsett in up here, that she was saying that we could just add, just to reiterate that when the property changes hands, they need to be aware, and they need to come to us and let us know that, hey, we're gonna re-up this agreement under this new person. Because here's the other thing, who do we hold liable? I mean, I guess we could if they're traveling on our property, but if there's nothing in writing, you know. Yeah.
Just, you know, update this.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Could you do that?
We'll make a motion behind me. If it's signed, for if they did.
Yeah, so I'll move to table the licensing agreement for further amendments.
I'll second. Motion in a second. Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Bring that motion here. Okay, onto discussion items. So Ramona Michelle, first read of update policy 1010, organization classification.
So this one was just a quick change. We have to, by law, because we're a joint school district, that language has to be in the policy, and it wasn't before. And then we just sort of reworded and added, you know, the word classification, instead of it being down here more like a definition, we just moved it up a little bit.
So now, prior policy just said Cootney County, I didn't say Cootney and Bonner Counties.
I guess this will come to a vote for its next round. And if there's any degree to this, and you have any comments or changes, please, and all of Chrissy. Anything else on that one? And next is first read of update policy 1520, public participation in board meeting to be renamed, to be renamed board meeting participation.
This one was quite lengthy. When we started going through it, it really was like two policies melded into one, and it could be very confusing. So we were trying to make it a lot simpler, so that the patrons knew how and if the board heard patron input. And then we will move the other policies to the public portion of the policy manual, so they know how to approach the board, whether it's just input or presentation, you know, more of an instructional kind of thing. Because it was literally all mishmashed in one policy, it was quite a bit.
So out of 1520, we ended up creating Form 00, right? Keeping 1520, skip that, creating Form 101.
Yeah, so that's 1520 now, see? Okay. Do you have questions on that one?
We want less reading.
And so then I.
We moved, we don't want you to miss out on the.
There's another policy, I know.
So when I did attach the current, the mess and the clean, so you can see what we took away.
Okay, then there's the current read of adoption of policy 4110, renamed patron participation forming. So this is a new policy created from the stuff from 151.
Correct, yes. Yeah, and we did look at other local, you know, like Coeur d'Alene Coast Falls, sort of looked at them, we looked at ISBA, and then we ended up with this, you know, which I think sort of, also with the whole online learning, we learned a lot ourselves about patron and participation, so we thought we should fix it. Or update it, right, to where we are today.
I like my, I have some input more virtually, to reflect a little bit of the time. Okay, any further questions or discussions on that one? Again, these will come before us to approve. So if we do find something, want, have comments or questions on, please, get a little Chrissy for the next board meeting. Okay? Alright, next is curriculum review, that was Ramona. Now, you have a workshop scheduled on that for the office level, so.
I just wanted to make sure, because our timeline's so scrung, and we ended up with the budget thing, I just wanted to make sure that because I went back, read every agenda, all the way to 2016. Actually, I went to 2015, just in case that the curriculum has not been reviewed, or at least it was not on the agenda, I'll say, for all those years. So I'm thinking that maybe we should look at.
Out of logistical, how are we thinking, did we say two hours for the board workshop before the meeting? Like, three to five, or four to six, or what, how many hours were you thinking?
I was thinking an hour and a half.
An hour and a half, okay.
And I will have some, I guess, examples, materials for you to look at. And then you now have access through that PowerPoint with the teaching handbook, so you'll be able to follow the instructional calendars. And I can answer any questions that you have about adopted texts. I'll give you kind of an overview of where we've been, where we are, so you have an understanding of why there hasn't been a curriculum review.
Right.
And then I'll answer any questions that you have.
Well, I understand that the district actually has a rich curriculum and quite wide, so, you know. But I thought with the big word, it might be good, but, and then all the changes we have, we can also remove and all that type of thing. And you will let us have a heads up on anything that you will present, or maybe we can do some footwork before the workshop, or?
We have the handbook.
Okay.
And then I will just bring in some textbooks and things for you to be able to look at. I, my plan was to put together a super short kind of presentation about how we got to where we are right now, and then share with you what we are and do. And then get take input from Ms. Parker, where you'd like to see us go forward. Just kind of my plan, is there something more that you have for?
No, that's good. Does the district maintain a list of prescribed reading novels, whatever, classics, all that, for grade levels, and what curriculum we're using, for what grade level, and do we, basically, inventory? Who the publisher is, when was the last edition we purchased, all those types of things, did you maintain anything like that, or?
We have something like that. It's not perfect, because we haven't had no adoptions, and so we have the old textbooks in the classroom that teachers can use, but then also really getting creative and using a lot of things online.
Right.
But we do have a list of, at the high school level, our ELA teachers can provide for me a list of the novels that we use in ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, 12th grade. They're actually on the syllabus, because parents have an opportunity to look at the list of books that could potentially be read that year. And if they have any objections to any that are on that list, they can request an optional book for their child. So those come out to the parents.
With the additional literature that's online, that's provided, is that also in syllabus? Or is that like dependent on topic at times?
Our, our high school teachers use, they, they use the collections textbook, and then a list of novels. So as far as at the secondary level, they're very much using the adopted textbook and novels. At the elementary level, we use, a teacher uses some trade books in addition, actually, we have a lot of Dr. Seuss-type things, and children's books, in addition to some of the stories that are in the adopted textbook.
Okay, so then no one's going to randomly choose and argue this, right? I would have been interested.
Well, we, we probably are getting a little.
Yeah, that's what, is that, because I can ask what there's more questions for. Yeah, to get into that, and I, and I can take, I can do some, 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 some things that countries are using. Okay, cool. And that, those come to us. Really, alright, sources of strength.
Yep, that one's me. I was just curious about that article that I read in the Coeur d'Alene Press, and I understand that this is all by grant through the state for our K through three.
K six.
Oh, is it K six?
Yes.
Okay, I thought it was just K three. Anyways, so that will be implemented into the district, and the board doesn't vote on it?
We just did a grant, however long ago we did, and the grant was applied for, and we got the grant, it all, as you probably saw in the article, there was only two other schools in Olivermore, Idaho, and all six of our elementary schools were chosen. So we'll actually have the counseling program, K through 12. So we already have the, at all secondary schools, the sources of strength. And it is the only research-based program for suicide awareness and prevention.
Yeah, I wasn't sure how much, I'd like to learn more, maybe you and I can sit down that. I'm concerned with the overall layout of the curriculum itself. I mean, I have no. I mean, I have no problem with the suicide prevention, alcohol drug, you know, everything that it covers. But I'm concerned that the parents haven't had a say and the board didn't have a say and it's being implemented. That's, that's my only concern.
I can certainly have the elementary counselors come and present if you'd like on that. Stacy Lawler, who's the teacher of the year for the entire state of Idaho. She wrote the grant initially for Timberlake Junior High School and they've been doing the program there for two years. Mountain View's been doing two years, Laker High School, Timberlake High School, slower getting started, Laker Junior High School, two years. So it's been in the district for a long time. I think that the elementary counselors who wrote the grant, we have an application that goes to the district leadership team that we approve all grant writing before. And it is a research-based.
I read that, I read the research papers, yeah, and I saw it was the only one.
We, and we can certainly have them come present on it. The one caveat, I guess I would say is parents always have permission slips ahead of time. And parents are always able to off their kids out if they don't want them to participate.
Right.
But it is a very, I guess, you know, it's very protective and how do you raise the protective factors versus decreasing the risk factor? So it's really done in a proactive way and it's supposed to be a lot of peer training. Stacy, could you come in for sure? Also, I think the elementary counselors, they voted unanimously, as you saw, they all wrote, no other district had all of their elementary schools in the entire state, we were the only one that all elementary schools were approved. So I think they feel really strongly about it, but they could certainly come and do a presentation if the board would like.
Yeah, I was just wondering how much of it we implement in web exercises? I just, all I could get was off the website, right? That's like my whole familiarity.
Yeah, I can definitely reach out and have that, them come to board meeting. I don't know if I can get everyone into Y, but they probably would be back in August if I see everybody into Y. Yeah, that's a great question though.
And next is a board advisory committee, Ramona?
Yep, that's me. I was just thinking with everything that I watched happen to approve the year, you know, with what we've been. Again, like with curriculum or all these different things that the board is tasked with by statute. It would be nice if we could start looking at advisory committees that are made up, sort of like you do with the long-range planning facility that are made up of community members, parents, staff, a board member, would be nice, or what have you. That it sort of do a lot of this groundwork for us so we could be a little bit more up to speed and efficient on some of these things. You know, my idea was just throw out there, you know, who wants to do this or whatever filter they fit in and then they're ready to get straight out of the box. And it's like, duh, you know, you're on the advisory committee so we can have some more input for people or, you know, other things. There are more things, but my brain's full of stuff I don't really draw with. So, and just an advisory committee made up of people that would like the board to consider that when we decide going forward.
Do you have a time frame moving that?
Well, I think it would be after school starts. A lot going on right now, so. Yeah.
Okay, I definitely want you to revisit that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, are you all ready to go onto the microphone and audio setup?
Yes, yes, thank you.
No, thank you. And then, so this was a list of, off item list, the materials for getting updated, microphone, audio setup for this room. So did you have questions, Brian, if you can speak to this, if anybody has questions on what you're looking at?
Numbers in parentheses is that the quantity need or what is that? One single weapon, 63?
I think that's the item number that.
Oh, okay.
Put on there, it's not the number, I know it's not the number.
Well, because table mic is 38, so.
Yeah, we are.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, I think that that is would be well said.
Like, here, I'm used to doing that, so that's why I'm like.
Was the total 350, I don't see a total on there, I think the total was 359.
Yeah, it wasn't too bad, let's see how it goes.
I'm going to bring up the total.
The microphone's the sort of big one that can just sort of capture the whole room.
335 was the total for all of that.
And I'm just following that. Anybody else have any questions on the microphone and audio setup? Any board member input for future denied items? A little bit. But is there anything else? Okay. So I need a motion to go into executive session. That, I'm trying, need a motion to go into executive session, right, 074-2021.
And then to go to executive session, right, 074-2021.
All second time. In a second, we'll call the.
Trusty Major.
Yes.
Trusty Thompson.
Yes.
Trusty Kristen.
Yes.
Trusty Irons.
Yes.
Channel. Okay.
You want to go by?
Thanks for coming.